Good morning, everyone. I call to order the August 8, 2024 Clackamas County Board of Commissioners Business Meeting. Administrator Gary Schmidt, would you please take the roll call?
Yes, Chair Smith. First, our staff supports today. County Council Jane Maranick, I'm sorry, County Council Jane Vedo, Clerk to the Board, Toni Maranick, sorry, I brought those together. My apologies. Apologies. Roll call, Commissioner Scholl.
Here.
Commissioner West.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Present.
Chair Smith.
Here. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Good morning, everyone. We are holding this meeting in person and virtually. If you've joined us via Zoom for this meeting and are interested in providing public comment, we will prompt you regarding how to do that when the time is right. General public comment will be taken at the usual allotted time. I would like to remind our participants, including staff, all elected officials, and members of the public, that Robert's rules of order will be followed in this business meeting. We welcome your opinions and look forward to your polite participation. Administrator Gary Schmidt, can you please introduce the first item?
Yes, Chair, thank you. This is reading and adoption of a previously approved land use ordinance, item one, adoption of a previously approved comprehensive plan and zoning and development ordinance amendments, ZDO-288, utility facilities. Caleb Hugel, Assistant County Counsel, will present.
Thank you, Gary. Good morning, Commissioners. The item is to adopt an ordinance approving ZDO-288, a package of text amendments to the Clackamas County Comprehensive Plan and Zoning and Development Ordinance that is primarily intended to more comprehensively define utility facility in related terms and to allow a broader range of utility facilities to qualify as primary or accessory uses rather than as conditional uses. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on the proposal on April 8. On May 13, the Planning Commission voted to recommend that the Board approve the proposal as recommended by staff with modifications. The Board held a public hearing on June 12 and voted four to one to approve the proposal as recommended by the Planning Commission with modifications. The Board then directed staff to draft an ordinance and findings reflecting that decision. During a public meeting on July 30, the Board reached consensus that additional staff-recommended modifications were needed to achieve the Board's objectives in approving the proposal. With the staff-recommended modifications, a conditional use permit would be required for gas transmission lines and above-ground electric transmission lines regardless of whether the line is in a road right-of-way, a utility easement, or on private property. The ordinance before you today would approve ZDO-288 as recommended by the Planning Commission with the June 12 Board modifications and the July 30 staff-recommended modifications. Findings supporting the decision are attached as an exhibit to the ordinance. It is staff's recommendation that you adopt the ordinance, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have on the materials before you today.
Thank you very much. Commissioner, comments? I don't see any, but Caleb, could you talk to me about the staff modifications from July 30?
Absolutely. Previously, electric and gas lines would have required a conditional use permit unless they were located in a road right-of-way or on property owned or controlled by the utility, for example, in a utility easement or land subject to a lease. Now, with the July 30 staff-recommended modifications, gas and above-ground electric transmission lines require a conditional use permit regardless of whether they are in a road right-of-way or on land owned or controlled by the utility.
Okay. Commissioner, questions or comments? You can go ahead. Commissioner Scholl?
Well, Chair, I really don't have a question on this one. I think, I really don't have a question on this. I think we have gone over this many, many times. One question, though. Are there any projects in the county at this time that will be affected by this new change to the ordinance, ZDO-288?
I would have to refer to planning staff on the applications that have been received so far.
Okay, thank you.
We have, we can always comment after the public hearing, Commissioners, if you think of something. Commissioner Savis?
So, there is a hearing aspect to this today?
Yes.
Okay.
Is that all, Paul?
Yes.
Okay. Due to the developments since the June 12, 2024, public hearing and language revisions to the proposed ordinance, County Council has recommended that the Board allow public testimony prior to considering the ordinance for adoption. I will now open the meeting for public testimony. Anybody in the room who would like to testify, please fill out a blue card, and you can come up. I currently have two, but you're not too late to testify if you would like to. First up, Ed Wagner. Please come forward, state your area of address, your area of residence, excuse me.
Good morning. I'm Ed Wagner. I live on Stafford Road, and I represent Safe Stafford Road. I want to thank you for this opportunity. Since my time's short, I'm going to cut my five minutes down as short as I can. Basically, the premise of what I want to talk to the Board about today is that I think it's critically important to include the underground in the new statement. I see where that was pulled out. Basically, option two by Dan Johnson, in reality, to, I think, the betterment of the entire community is the perfect, the perfect statement. It includes both the underground and also the non-conforming use, which appears to be excluded. I don't know if there was a rationale for that or if it's purposeful. Would be helpful to understand why that was removed, but I want to drill down into the underground wire situation. I've attended every single meeting, including the one in November 29, where this proposal first came about. I've been at every Planning Commission meeting, including all the Board meetings, and there's one, one primary concept that came out of all of you folks and especially out of the Planning Commission, and that was their serious concern about public engagement. You know, I'm sure a lot of you are aware, we've sent a lot of letters and emails both to the Planning Commission and to the Board, and our voices were heard, we believe, at the Planning Commission. They ultimately voted four to two in favor of this exclusion from the original. And I want to kind of give you a sense as to what can happen here. I assume the thought process might have been to exclude underground wiring was that it might encourage utility companies to start with that. I'd like to give you kind of a scenario, and unfortunately, we have to use our existing example, whether we want to admit or not, the Tonkin Project has been kind of the guinea pig for a lot of this discussion. What happens if a permit is stalled out at land use and the utility company's having trouble getting a permit? In which case, you know, they've already issued easements, which they've gone to the PUC, because the only way they can condemn property is they've got to get a convenience and necessity certificate from the PUC. So this thing's getting bottled up, and what does utility company do if they're going to be behind schedule and they're not sure they're going to get, they're going to get permission? Here's what could happen, and maybe each case is going to be different, but the utility company could go in, they could withdraw their current permit request, they could come back with a new permit request for underground, in which case, if this underground is excluded from the new, from the new policy, it'll be a rubber stamp.
Continue, please.
Thank you. The county will have the ability, the county will essentially provide the permit with no questions asked. There will, there will be no need to go to the PUC because there will be no easements. The easements disappear. That puts a tremendous risk on the property owners, and I think possibly on the county. I think it puts the county at risk as well. Can you imagine all the, all the property that could be taken immediately? And it's not just the property we're talking about now, it's another 20, 30, 40 feet, and it won't just be the 31 easements that are currently under discussion, it'll probably be every single homeowner. This is going to create chaos, and it's going to be a tremendous challenge for everybody at hand. I would seriously hope you would reconsider putting the underground wire back into the verbiage here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. First, I'm going to call on County Council, and then I'm going to have the DTT planning staff come forward now, please. Two questions were raised. Why was the underground not included? Non-conforming use? And what about PGE's ability to circumvent our land use process? Can somebody start answering these questions?
Sorry, I was walking up, so you had several, it sounded like.
Yeah, Mr. Wagner had several questions. Did you hear those?
I did.
Okay, go ahead.
So, there's a question about why the current proposal only includes underground electric transmission lines? And the answer to that is because that's where we landed on July 30. We had given you various options, the Board talked about that, we gave you a couple of suggestions, we talked on the 30th about whether it was really necessary to include underground electric lines, and the consensus was to add back in that word "above ground" that had been left out of that, that second option. So, I think the policy question is whether the Board thinks there's a need for a conditional use permit for an underground electrical line. We've heard a lot of testimony during this process that the public would prefer that these lines be underground rather than above ground, because they don't have the same aesthetic impacts as the larger, taller towers. So I think staff's assumption was that it would be good if we were encouraging utilities to place those transmission lines underground rather than above ground, and so that's the reason it reads the way it does.
Regarding underground, so is easier for the utility to place them underground the way it's written?
Yes. It's, I say, it's not easier to actually put it underground in terms of the physical, you know, what they need to do and the lines, but it's easier land, through the land use process. Yes.
All right. Commissioner Savis?
Yeah, I just want to, I appreciate Mr. Wagner's comments and attention and awareness of what took place there, and I just want to say that all those thoughts were going through my mind when, when I chose to go with the flow and get something across the finish line. I thought, you know, that number one, the, the risk of above, of above ground is, electrical transmission lines is higher, the aesthetic risk is, or not risk, but the aesthetic realities are obviously, you know, at the forefront in this conversation. I also thought that underground gas lines, transmission lines, I'll make sure that this whole thing, contextually, this is all about transmission lines, not about normal utilities for local distribution, that the magnitude of gas lines and what it could be, it could be quite dangerous to the local area. You know, in the back of my mind, I've certainly, we kind of know that around the country, underground electrical has had some issues with dangerous things, but of course, I don't, I thought that was local distribution, not transmission. But I also have always had a concern when I first became a Commissioner about what happens to the unique changes in a piece of land when it's carved up and something large, like a gas line, is put in place, and there's a local property down the street here that has a, a natural gas transmission line that runs through it. And that, that particular piece of property has been a multi-generational property, and after that transmission line was put in place, that property's been sliding and sliding and sliding, not the part, not the above-ground part or, yeah, the higher elevation part where the natural gas line isn't, but everything down below it. And what happens is when they backfill these lines and they got to put in the proper material, gravel and so forth, it's very porous, and underground water gets into that, and it becomes really almost an underground river at times, and that happened actually a number of properties that I've seen around the county. So I do have that same concern, but I thought getting something was better than nothing, but if the Board is willing to reconsider that and make it all transmission lines, whether it's above ground or whatnot, I would be willing to support that today.
Thank you. We have another question. Do you remember that new permit is denied? PGE can withdraw that and then apply for a new permit and somehow circumvent the condemnation process? I think if I, I think I got that, Ed, right? So, okay, yes, couldn't remember, I wrote some notes.
So, I want to be clear, and I think it's, it's difficult, because there are multiple things going on related to this particular PGE line that, you know, overlap in some ways, but you've got the PUC process for condemnation, you've got our code amendments, and then you've got the fact that PGE has already filed an application for a non-conforming use alteration under our current code before these amendments are, you know, are approved. So if, I guess the first point is if they need to condemn property, doesn't matter whether the line's above ground or underground, if they need to condemn property, they have to go to the PUC for that. So it's not, you know, it's not as though that gets circumvented, as far as I understand. I am not an expert on state condemnation law, but that's my understanding. What they could do, because the non-conforming use application is in right now to do an above-ground line, if instead, they could now do a, an underground line as an outright permitted use, they could choose to redesign this entire project and put it underground, and then they would not need a land use permit. But it's not going to prevent them from needing, as I understand, I'm going to look at Caleb, they still need to go through a PUC process if they can't fit the line within an easement they already have.
He's nodding his head, yes. Okay, say that again for the record, please.
If the Board adopted these amendments as written with the July 30, 2024 staff-recommended modifications, and PGE wanted to put the Stafford line underground, they wouldn't require a conditional use permit, but they would still have to go through the Oregon Public Utility Commission to obtain the authority to condemn land if they couldn't fit it all within an existing right-of-way.
Any other comments based on the testimony you just heard, Jennifer? Or Dan? Dan?
Couple things, the public's watching. I want to make sure we are crystal clear, this Board has no role in that condemnation process. I'm just going to, there's been some confusion around that, I want to make sure we're crystal clear about that. Number two, there is nothing regarding our land use process that is going to deal with how that line underground is constructed or installed. There's nothing that we have a relevance towards, and I appreciate the concern about, you know, undergrounding and the circumstances you raised, Commissioner Savis, there's nothing in our code that will stipulate that, it's more just the impacts of the community. And I think it's that impact to the community discussion, which again, what we've been hearing from the community, what we've been hearing from the Board, are these large-scale, above-ground distribution lines, pardon me, transmission lines, regardless of where they are. I don't want to single out Stafford, regardless of where they are. I don't think our public utilities definition ever even considered putting a utility of this nature in this particular area. So, just some comments.
Well, the bouncing ball has bounced all over the place. First we hear, no offense, guys, first we hear from the community, oh, don't put these transmission lines in front of my house, you're going to block my view. And then we tweak the code, and you come back, oh, don't do this. And then you go to this group, and you meet with the PUC Commissioners, and they say one thing, and then, oh, don't do this. And so, we've got to move forward with something, and we're trying to do the very, very best. And so, saying today, oh, you need to add back in underground, I need to be more crystal clear exactly what that means for us. If we change the language today, Caleb, is it a one-and-done, or do they have to come back again?
I think that if the motion was crafted clearly enough, we could, we could, you could tell staff you want to adopt them as written, eliminating the limitation to requiring a conditional use permit for above ground, so that then even underground electric transmission lines.
But what does that mean for the utility, then? Does anybody know in the room? Can, can anybody comment? Is the utility company doing this okay with that? See, we've heard from one side, but we haven't heard from the other side.
Well, I can tell you that we got a letter from PGE this week, and I know that that did go to the Board as well as to staff, and their position is what it has been consistently through the process, is that they do not believe there should be a conditional use permit for any electric lines.
They do not want a conditional use.
Correct. Above ground, below ground, they would prefer there be no land use requirement. So I don't think they're, I mean, they would, I believe, based on that, be opposed to expanding, you know, to, to below ground in addition to above ground.
Okay. Thank you for coming forward. Don't go far, we have another gentleman who wants to testify. Up next, John Leicas. You bet.
I want to go take a 50,000-foot view here, which I think is important, and I think that the county Commissioners and the county in general, supervision of Portland General Electric is critical, and I don't care what they're doing. And I said in March, you know, really off the cuff, I said I wouldn't let them run a popsicle stand without supervision, and at the time, maybe that's a little off the cuff, but after dealing with these guys for 14 months, I think it's kind of right on the money. And I'd like to bring something to your attention, I'm going to give you a copy of this. You know, is the Tonkin Project necessary? PGE said yes. What turns out, it's not. They filed with the PUC, and they specifically said it was for a water treatment facility backup, the line they want to put along Stafford Road in front of our property. They said they needed backup. So, I'm going to read you here. They, they, they applied for power for the same water supply outfit in January of 2023, and I want to read this to you, and this is, this is their words, not mine, and I'll give you a copy of this. Says right here, "The Tonkin Substation is needed to support the Willamette Water Supply Project Treatment Plant." This is, this is in January 23, and they got approval for that, and, and they're building the Tonkin Substation, which provides them 31 times more power than they need to run that substation. In addition to that, that's, that, the, the water treatment facility has two backup generators. The, the, the line along Stafford, it does nothing. It's, it's, it's a duplicate effort. It's, it's a fraud. I mean, that's really what it is. It's unnecessary. I understand they're doing it for the money, but I'll give you a copy of this. Something else I wanted to point out to you here, they, they went down to the Twolleton Planning Commission, and they got a variance. So, so in Twolton, the rule is 50 feet, you can't be within 50 feet of these, of these big power lines because it says, it says right here, their own words, not mine, it says here, "The distancing between the equipment and other metal objects, fences and trees, which can conduct electricity and cause arcing." So what they did to, to, they went to the city of Twolton, they got approval, they moved it from 50 feet down to 10 feet. I mean, they made it more dangerous. So, and my point there is they need supervision, whether it's underground or above ground, technology continues to get better, gets different, I mean, and we don't know what's going to happen 10 years from now, and I just think these guys need supervision. And, and, and I'll give this to the, to you, but, but you can see right in there that they, they have applied, have been granted enough power to run that water treatment facility, and that, and now they're coming back and saying, oh, it's a water treatment facility. And the reason they said that is because they know that the PUC sees that as a necessity, and so they, they gave them the waiver. So I just want to give you that. I'm also going to give you the letter that I sent to John Melgren, Judge Melgren, who pulled the plug on the Tonkin Project yesterday at the PUC, and it states in here just, you know, kind of what I'm saying here. But, but I think it's important because this is a project that doesn't need to be done, underground or above ground, and I think with the county Commissioners involved, you can prevent these, these kind of unnecessary things. And don't forget, PGE makes 70% of their money by putting steel in the ground, and that's what they do. You know, really, to fix this thing, they should be, just like an oil company, they should be allowed to buy power at 10 kilowatts and sell it at 12, and, and be regulated on what they can make, and stop destroying the countryside. And because of that, whether it's underground or above ground, the, the incentive is the same. They want to build more, and I think to prevent unnecessary projects like the Tonkin line that they've been squawking about, to prevent that, I think, I think you got to put underground in there, too. I think you got to put everything in there. But that's my two cents on it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Leicas. There's a couple of questions you raised. Dan, could you and Jennifer come forward again? You mentioned something that we don't supervise, the construction of the underground, of the installation of the underground lines. I'm old school. Back when my husband and I were building houses and all that kind of stuff, every step of the way, we had to have something inspected. You dig the line, they inspect the line. You put part, you put the gravel in, you lay the pipe over the top, they inspect it. You run water through, they inspect it. Then they put the gravel on the top, and then they put the, and they inspect it, and they inspect it, and they inspect it. Can you explain to me the process of the utility company?
We don't permit them.
The county does not inspect the construction?
No, we do not. We have authority.
So what are the standards that a utility uses for installation?
They have adopted standards, we can get that information in more detail to the Board. They have adopted, I'm assuming, federal standards for construction of pipes or utilities at certain levels that they have to meet and achieve and affirm to the PUC when they're in their construction process.
So they report to the PUC on how they're constructing it? Do they take pictures, do they send them along? How do you, how do you document that they're doing it right? I think that's the question that, that is in the room today.
So, we're not experts on how the construction process works. The county permits, like individual, we do electrical permits for individual service lines and, you know, things that you're doing when you're building a home or a business, but we do not have permitting authority over those big lines. There are, as I understand it, federal standards and state standards, and the PUC does have adopted standards that are safety, but how those things get inspected, I do not know the answer to that.
I mean, there's, there's, those plans are drawn, let's just back up, just in general. As with any capital project, plans are drawn, plans are stamped by certified engineers, there are design specs within those certifications, there's a requirement per their licenser to ensure it gets constructed appropriately.
So what's happening on this action the Board will take today is, it's just not for Stafford, it's for countywide. And frankly, when this issue raised its head, none of us knew that this was going to be an issue based on our current land use laws in Clackamas County, and no one was more surprised than probably me and some of my fellow Commissioners, okay, on this, and maybe staff, too. This is somewhat a difficult needle to thread, making sure that the utility has the ability to expand for growth and deliver ample electricity to the people who demand it, which is me. Boy, I don't like being without my electricity. I love my electricity. I'm just saying. However, if this came down my road, and I have wondered that many times, I don't think that I would oppose it. I think I would say, okay, not that I could, because I've been in too many situations where I live, on too many declared natural disasters, where I saw people in medical and health conditions because they didn't get their electricity, and quite frankly, on the other end of my farm is my 91-year-old father, who's very dependent on electricity for his life. Yes, we have generators, but that only goes so far as you're able to buy the fuel to do that, and when the gas station down at the end of Meadow Brook Hill is without electricity, so the people that drive up to buy gas, when that electricity is out, where do you get your gasoline to power your generator? So it's one domino effect after the other, how that works. And then the cell phone towers are out for an extended period of time, not because of PGE, because of the way, the way they operate, so who do you call for help? And so it's just, you know, I just want everybody to be happy, and I want everybody to have electricity, I want to minimize any damage to people's land, I understand deeply about the looks and appearances of people's land to do this. And so we're going to try to move on with more discussion on this. Is there anyone else in the room who would like to testify on this particular hearing?
Chair, can I get a clarification from Hugel? He said something about...
Come on up, Ed. Come on up, Ed. Come on up, Ed. Come on up, Ed.
Oh.
That's all right.
Legal counsel said something that caught my ear. And you indicated when the question came up about doing underground wiring. I heard you specifically say it would, in a re-permit application, at that point, it would require a conditional use permit. I think that's what I heard you say.
Would you like me to respond? So if the board adopted the ZDO 288 as written with the July 30 staff recommended modifications, and PGE wanted to reapply to install an underground transmission line, then it would not require a conditional use permit.
Right. That was, okay. That, that's my, that's my whole point.
Are you clear? Okay. We will go to the online, see if anyone, Mr. Savas, you're up, or you want to wait for the online?
I just wanted just to say what Dan's comments were regarding not having the control. That when I brought this issue about the aforementioned gas line down the street, the property owner, I contacted naturally our staff and the DTD director at the time, basically not only said the same thing, but that we were powerless to do anything to resolve that, that they had the right to do that. So that utility was, it was too bad, so sad. A good chunk of that man's property is unusable. I just wanted to share that.
Thank you. Tony, is there anyone on Zoom?
If you would like to testify on ZDO 288 public, or utility facilities, please use the raise hand feature, and I will call on you in the order received. I will begin with Kelly Bartholomew. Ms. Bartholomew, please state your name and area of residence. You'll have three minutes.
Hey, this is Kelly Bartholomew. I live on Stafford Road as well. And I just wanted to make a few comments about things that have said. First, I want to say that safe Stafford Road is not against the entire Tonkin project. We are, we want everyone to have electricity. What we are against is bringing high voltage power lines that have proven emissions in a residential area directly over people's homes. So it, that is what we are opposed to. There are many places PGE can route the line that are not in a residential area. And second, PGE has not been an honest broker in this entire process. We have brought up, you know, lie after lie after lie. So the thought of them being able to go on anyone's property without any county approval from any process is frightening to me. They, their main interest is making money. And if they have to plow down every tree on my property, they do not care. So what I'm saying is I feel like I really, 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 I mean, I hope you guys can understand that. Additionally, the underground lines, they require a larger easement than the overground. They would clear cut our entire front of our property to make enough clearance for an underground line. So
That's true.
I, I, I just feel like I don't, I just, I'm worried about that. I'm worried about the health effects. And I just, I'm worried about PGE having comp launch to do anything they want for any project. Like, I feel like underground, overground, above ground, wherever it is. Because they, like John was saying, they changed the rules. They themselves said it's not safe within, what did he say, 25 or 30 feet? But then they changed it to 10 just to push the project through? That's not safe for people. We have people living directly under that line. We have kids waiting for the bus under the rock. We have a church under the line. Like, this is just, I don't trust them. And I really, I hope you guys will. And then if they just say, oh, well, we're going to have oversight, we're going to adopt the national standard and have oversight, or, you know, do it like they say, no one's inspecting them. No one's out on the project. Like Chair Stiss was saying, we, we, no one's there to check on them. So if they at least go through the permitting process, at least we've asked some of these questions. There's no one, I mean, they changed the rules to five feet, or 10 feet. What's to say they won't do that in the future? So I, I really hope this board will consider adopting above ground, underground, and, and oversee this multimillion dollar company that is not accessible to normal people. Thank you.
Thank you. Tony, is there anyone else?
If you would like to testify, please use the raise hand feature, and I will call on you in the order received. Madam Chair, do not have any hands raised.
Thank you. I will now close the public hearing portion of this meeting and ask if there's any further discussion from commissioners. Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you. First question is, will the adoption of ordinance ZDO 288 as presented today have, have any effect on the Tonkin project?
Come forward, please. Thank you, planning staff.
So maybe. It's a little hard to predict. PGE has submitted an application for an alteration of a nonconforming use because there is an existing distribution line on Stafford Road that's been there since before zoning. And our current code would require a conditional use permit for that line if it was built today, before you make these amendments. So they filed to alter that nonconforming use to replace it basically with a transmission line. That application's currently incomplete. I don't know what PGE is going to do with the application, but it's pending right now. With these new amendments, sorry, it just gets really complicated, because distribution lines will then be outright allowed, right? They aren't a nonconforming use anymore. So if for some reason, their existing application was to void out for some reason, they couldn't reapply for that particular type of application. What they would be required to do then is file for a conditional use permit. So I think from a practical perspective, which I think is probably what you're asking, they require a land use permit now to do what they want to do. They will require a land use permit even after these changes. There's just a little question about exactly what kind. But it would still involve public process, option to appeal, and all the usual sort of, you know, public steps that go through land use review, regardless of whether you leave the code the way it is now or adopt this proposal. Unless they choose to put the Tonkin project underground. I have not heard they have any intention of doing that. But if they do, then it's what we were just talking about. At the, at the moment, the, the code that you're considering today would not require a conditional use permit for an underground transmission line.
I see. Okay, thank you. One more, one more question. On the issue regarding underground, you know, we currently have the word above, isolating this to only above ground, correct, transmission lines, gas or electric. The, like you mentioned earlier, the, the idea for not including underground, in part, was to stimulate the potential for utilities to build projects that might be less intrusive, that would generate less objection from the public. So I'm wondering this morning if we might look at removing the word above again. What do you think, Dan?
No. I, I, I just, here's the discussion. The discussion we've had from the community since day one is the fact that above-ground lines that are large in scale impact the community. That is repeatedly what we have heard.
Yeah.
And there's concerns about below-ground gas. I still don't know what we're going to review for below-ground gas to ensure they're safe. But you think about, you go to the purpose of the conditional use. The purpose of the conditional use application is the, is the impact on that on the community. If it's a visual impact, or, I haven't been a planner for a long time, so you got to excuse me. But it's, it's those things that the community can see. So you think about what are conditional use type projects? You know, they may be large, you know, I don't know.
I mean, conditional use permits, mining, large utility facilities, like water treatment plants, and yeah.
Yeah. And so it's those things that have kind of a broader visual impact, you know, to a community, or traffic related, or something like that. And I, there's a lot of emotion around this topic, and I appreciate all the emotion. I'm going to go back to what the chair said. This is dealing with every utility that we deal with in Clackamas County. I don't want to, Stafford is one area, and there is a passionate discussion, and I appreciate it. But the concern is when we step back and look at the county in its totality, you know, the, the concern about is, we actually have code, I think, that promotes trying to get electrical underground.
Well, there's a proposal to adopt a comprehensive plant policy today that would definitely say that we think that's a good idea for resiliency and, you know, wildfire risk and those kinds of things. And there are times that PGE is looking at undergirding lines as part of their wildfire mitigation plan. And so the question is, do, if, I don't know if those will be transmission lines or distribution. But if they are transmission, then a conditional use permit imposes a barrier to doing that.
And, and again, underground is more, again, more around the distribution than the transmission, because transmission are larger scale facilities. You know, when you, when you put these facilities under, when you put anything underground, there's increased capital costs upfront, there's increased maintenance costs going forward. I mean, so any, any entity who's looking at doing that takes those things into consideration. And it's a difficult decision to make. We have, I can tell you, we historically in our work with PGE, they are not super excited about desire to put things underground, because they can get to things above ground easier. Or any utility that's not gravity related, like sewer and sanitizer, or in storm sewer, et cetera.
Okay. One last question. So compared to where we are at today with the current ordinance, adoption of the change to ordinance ZDO 288 today as you have presented, would that result in greater community comment and input on any potential future projects?
It would highlight community impact around the projects that we've heard there's community concern about. And so right now, the way it's written right now in the interpretation is we're doing land use for everything. We don't have the staff to do that, the capacity to do that. There's just an inability to do that. But right now, again, if you think about the public engagement that we've done, these are the things that have kind of risen to the top, that they're, the concern. So do I, do we hear concerns about the fact that, hey, let's go put a storm sewer down Sunnyside Road?
Probably not.
I don't think so. Do we hear a concern about a water line going down Cozy Avenue? No, didn't hear a word. Did we hear a concern about large-scale transmission facilities that were above ground? Yes, most definitely. Chair, or Commissioner Savas brought forward concerns about on below-ground gas. And we had heard, we had talked about certain types of gas, but, but about natural gas, not, but additional concerns about future gas production were brought forward. Those are the concerns we heard. And that, and the intent is to basically ensure, it's a delicate balance between the fact that we are trying to ensure that our utilities can provide utilities to the citizens of Clackamas County as cost-effective as possible. However, there are certain things the community has concerns about. And, and we have listened to those concerns, and we are trying to implement a code that threads that needle between those two things.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Yep.
Commissioner Savas?
Yeah, I, I want to make sure that, from my perspective, it's, where I'm coming from is that I, I support whatever infrastructure it takes for local distribution, whether that's, and ideally, for electrical, I would prefer underground. I think the aesthetics of poles can be very ugly. We have a lot of areas where those poles just, they have a very negative visual impact. So to underground local distribution lines, I'm okay with that. I think that's a good thing. And I would like to see that promoted. Yes, I did hear the concern about, unfortunately, the way the code's crafted today, everything comes, distribution or otherwise, and in many circumstances, has to go through this laborious, onerous process. So we are resolving that if we limit it simply to transmission lines. So my initial reason for raising my hand was to ask legal counsel, if we were to, you know, I, if it looks as easy as striking the word above ground, if I were to read the motion, is that adequate? Or is it necessary to make a statement that we're modifying the proposed wording? How would you like it worded?
I think if the board chooses to include underground as a conditional use, the wording that we have drafted is a conditional use permit for underground electric transmission lines in addition to above-ground electric, above-ground electric transmission lines.
Okay. Is it not easier just to remove the word above ground, and then it applies to both, as, as does with the gas lines?
I, I, I don't know enough about this industry to know if there's, if, if there's a technical reason for doing that. But I think from a legal perspective, to be as absolutely crystal clear as possible is always advisable.
Removing above ground where it specifically states which utility lines require conditional use permits would probably be specific enough. But the word above ground appears in the code in many places, so you can't just say, get rid of the word above ground wherever it appears.
Okay. So I'll, I'll take a stab at the motion, and if, I'll look for a head nod if I got it right.
I have one written out, if you would like to look at it.
Okay, thank you. That's even better. So I move we adopt ordinance ZDO-288 as written, including the July 30, 2024 staff recommended modifications, but requiring a conditional use permit for underground electric transmission lines in addition to above-ground electric transmission lines.
Commissioner Savas has made a motion to basically add underground transmission lines to what we were going to adopt. Today as written, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. I'd like some more discussion on this. First of all, staff, and I know there's some PGE representatives in the room. Would you like to opine on it? So what's the effect that it has?
Well, I understand the fact is that all transmission lines, all gas transmission lines and all electric transmission lines, regardless of where they are located, will require a conditional use permit. My preference for the code language compared to what we have now would be to just strike the word above ground. I think that that would be clear enough to do it in about 20 places, but I don't know.
It would be important to know specifically where in the code the word above ground is being stricken, because it's
Oh, sorry. Everywhere that we list that use.
Exactly. That's what I want.
Yes, correct. Everywhere we're talking about the type of utility lines that are going to require a conditional use permit. If we simply strike the word above ground in front of electric transmission lines, that would achieve what Commissioner Savas is asking for, I believe. And I think that would be the most, the clearest way to write it in the code, in my opinion. But, but the answer substantively is it doesn't matter where the line is, it'll need a conditional use.
Okay. We know PGE wants to install, if they get this wonderful grant, underground utility lines in some areas of Clackamas County where there is the potential for severe wildfires. Does this addition of the underground help with that future process?
No, it would require a conditional use permit if it's a transmission line and it's going to be underground. Or it depends on if they're modifying something existing. But the bottom line is they'll need a land use permit.
Okay. I, I guess I need to make my question more clear. Would this board have to go back and redo the ZDO to allow that project to happen?
No, they'd need a permit, a land use permit.
Okay. So if we adopt the underground language today, we do not have to go back at a later date to adopt language?
No. No.
Either way, either way, we don't.
Correct.
Having said, having said that, that opens up, you know, a corridor that's of, in public news all the time is kind of the Mount Hood Corridor, for example. So if they go down and they look to underground, a transmission line within that entire corridor, that means that we are doing a land use conditional use application for that entire, or nonconforming use for that entire corridor.
For the entire 20 miles or whatever.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any representative from Portland General Electric in the room who would like to opine on any of these topics today? Please come forward, sir. Would you please introduce yourself and what you do?
Jordan Messinger. I'm a project manager with Portland General Electric. And so I, two things I'd like to say, I guess, to, to the question immediately posed by you, Chair Smith. I'm not, I'll start out saying I'm not a land use person for PGE. I'm just a project manager, so I can't speak, excuse me, all the details. But from my understanding, excuse me, my understanding of the proceedings today, I don't think that the, the change in wording would, would, I guess, the, the way the code is being interpreted today versus either one of those wordings, I don't think would impact us. My understanding, the way it's written today, we have to get land use for everything, so we'd still have to get land use for any transmission project. So just, that's my interpretation, listening today. So I don't, I don't think that it would change us. Of course, I think our greater, our larger desires on that are known. But I think the, the council already knows that due to the, the letter that was sent. The other thing I wanted to say is just correct the record on an item that was brought up by Mr. Leicas. He referenced a, a variance that PGE obtained from the city of Twalton. And I just wanted to of Tuolton. And I just wanted to clear up some of the facts about that. So what he's referring to is our land use permit for the substation itself. So that is not a transmission facility. That is the, the defined substation facility that's located in Tuolton. And the variance that we requested there and received was for a change in the required setback. So the zoning of that area required a 50-foot setback from any structure, including a perimeter fence, to the edge of the property. We wanted to have more space between our electrical equipment and the perimeter fence of the property in order to heighten public safety. So we requested to reduce the setback between the, the property boundary and our perimeter fence to 10 feet from 50 feet. And the city of Tuolton granted that to us. So that actually allowed us to increase the safety of that facility by keeping the electrified components farther away from that perimeter fence that keeps people away from them. And then in conjunction with that, we also went through a land use process for that facility and met the requirements there and obtained a land use permit to build that.
Thank you very much for coming forward.
Thanks.
Commissioner Savas, you have your light on.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, Chair, that you, you raise a good point with regard to whether or whether or not this allows or disallows transmission lines, whether underground or above. And I just want to, it's already been said, it might be obvious to us now, but I want to make sure everyone in the public are watching this understands that this is not foreclose any ability for PGE to build transmission lines or gas lines above ground or below ground. All it does is it goes through a conditional use process. So it's not, does not outright disallow it. So, so I do want to address our staff. Jennifer Hughes suggested that for sake of code and whatnot, it might be easier to, to strike the word, the wording. So I'm looking back at legal counsel. Should I withdraw the motion and restate it? I want to make sure staff is, is consistently on board with the change.
I, I think the important thing, we could take a, I mean, I don't know, we could take a recess and
Well, this is what I think. I think that the motion as we present it, that you made, does not require any further code changes. And so I think it would be beneficial to today's process to be super clear what you're allowing and not leave some confusion around the remainder of the code. So that, that's my concern about, about the proposal today. So I, I think my recommendation would be to go with the language that we proposed or on your motion.
Okay, so can I, can I, Counselor, can I ask a question? Does it foreclose the opportunity to staff or land use staff to make the changes they'd like to change in the most efficient manner? Is this just, is this only going to impact this motion here today? Or will they need to include above and, and above and below ground in all of their code amendments?
My understanding is that the motion that you made today, if adopted, will not have a negative impact or a clarity impact on our existing code, which is why we drafted it that way. But I defer to Caleb on that.
Just so that I, if you, if you, so this is just so staff is clear in making the motion you just made, the intent is to require a conditional use permit for both above ground and underground electric transmission lines, as well as all gas lines, which was already in there. Okay, all right. I think that's clear enough.
Okay.
All right.
Okay. Commissioners, there is a motion on the table, and it has been seconded to include underground in this particular ZDO. Is there further discussion? Are we ready to take Commissioner Shaw?
I just have one question. And that is, if the motion made by Commissioner Savas is approved, is there going to be a heavy impact on staff to
Please come forward, staff.
To handle, handle of the addition of the underground part. What's, what's it going to cost you?
Well, I can't tell you what it's going to cost, but I think it'll be limited impact for, because first of all, anything you're doing today is going to be better than what we have right now, which requires land use for everything. Okay, so, so whatever you do is an improvement. It's rare to do a transmission line in the first place, and it's even more rare to do one underground. So the odds that we're going to get a bunch of those that require land use under Commissioner Savas's motion, I think they're fairly low.
Okay.
But the reality is, when we get one, it's a big deal, because we got to notify thousands of people potentially, because it's 20 miles long. But I don't think it'll happen very often.
It's extremely expensive.
It is expensive, yes.
Yeah, it's, I, I don't foresee that in Stafford whatsoever, unless there's a distribution line buried underground to a house that's been there for 20 years, and maybe that happened, I don't know.
And I have just one more question, Chair Smith.
Yes.
On this issue. Okay, so for the concerns about fire safety between Sandy and government camp, we already have underground transmission between the Rotornden facility and government camp. And so the area that PG is, PGE is looking at now is from the Sandy area up to Rotornden. Now, when they get to that project and they need to get a permit, is that going to be one permit for the entire remaining length? Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Okay.
Gary.
I'm sorry, Commissioners, a process order. You need to first vote to read the ZDO by title only, and then you do the motion you're talking about now. I'm sorry, we're out of order.
Thank you. And then do we vote on the amendment before we vote on the, the motion?
Jane, what do you recommend, please?
Um, yes.
Okay, I'll, I'll withdraw the motion, and I move we read ZDO dash 288 by title only.
Second.
Commissioner Savas has moved, we move ordinance ZDO dash 288 as written, and Commissioner West has seconded the motion. Any further discussion? I hope not. Tony, hurry, take the poll.
Commissioner Shaw.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Savas.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Commissioner Savas.
Yep. I move we adopt ordinance ZDO dash 288 as written, including the July 30, 2024 staff recommended modifications, but requiring a conditional use permit for underground electric transmission lines in addition to above ground electric transmission lines.
I apologize, Commissioners. Tony has to read the ZDO by title only first, and then your motion.
Go ahead. My fault, stood in that.
Ordinance number ZDO 288 and ordinance amending chapters three, four, and five of the Clackamas County Comprehensive Plan in sections 202, 315, 316, 317, 510, 511, 512, 513, 602, 604, 702, 711, 8301, 001, 10006, 1102 of the Clackamas County zoning and development ordinance.
Now, Commissioner Savas, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I move we adopt ordinance ZDO dash 288 as written, including the July 30, 2024 staff recommended modifications, but requiring a conditional use permit for underground electric transmission lines in addition to above ground electric transmission lines.
Still seconding.
On the original language, we had gas transmission lines, and those have been omitted in this particular motion. Is that okay?
The clarification that I asked Commissioner Savas to say was that this is just, the purpose of Commissioner Savas's motion is just to clarify that we're adding underground in addition to above ground. It's not to say we're getting rid of the requirement for a conditional use permit for
Okay.
Gas lines.
Thank you. It has been moved by Commissioner Savas and seconded by Commissioner West. Any further discussion? Tony, would you please take the poll?
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Savas.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye, motion passes five zero. Thank you all very much for everybody participating today in a very complicated and lengthy topic. What's next, Gary?
Next is a board discussion item. Item one, approval of a letter of comment to the Measure 110 Accountability and Oversight Committee. Tony Holowetsky, interim director of Public and Government Affairs, will present. You discussed this earlier this week. This is a continuation. Go ahead, please, Tony.
Welcome, Tony.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tony Holowetsky, interim director of Public and Government Affairs. On Tuesday, as you remember, we discussed the new Measure 10 funds formula announced by the Measure 10 Accountability and Oversight Council, and that because of this new formula, Clackamas County will really receive less funds. The new formula, as you recall, intended to improve revenue to rural communities, and that will, of course, benefit our rural population. But it also downplayed or discounted a county's total population, which led to a significant reduction in overall funding. Other, other formula considerations also negatively impacted the amount of funds allocated to Clackamas County. And as we discussed on Tuesday, the decrease in the funds will impact dollars that could flow through to the behavioral health resource networks that provide addiction recovery services. And it will also impact any funding Clackamas County may receive for any future deflection programs if the legislature continues the program. So on Tuesday, you recommended that we draft a letter to deliver to the council outlining our concerns. And today I'm here to review the draft with you and to seek your input and direction. The letter is longer than usual, I will admit, but we wanted to be sure to highlight our key concerns and with the new funding formula, and we have many concerns. So I'm happy to go over the letter or with you or cede the floor to you for your comments and input.
Do you seek to have that letter approved today?
Ideally, yes, but if we
Okay, Commissioners, you were given the letter. I have it on my desk. I just forgot to walk in with it. I have read the letter. I am fine with it. We do need to send something today because time is of the essence of this particular matter. Do we have any comments on this letter?
I move we approve the letter as written.
Seconded.
Thank you, Commissioner Savas. He moves that we approve the letter as submitted and written, and Commissioner Shaw has seconded the motion. Further discussion? Seeing none, Tony, please take the poll.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Gary, what's next?
Thank you. Next is the consent agenda. Tony, would you please read the consent agenda?
Clackamas County Consent Agenda. Elected Officials, item one, approval of previous business meeting minutes for the Board of County Commissioners. Item two, approval of a board order authorizing a purchase order under a cooperative contract with Axon Enterprise Incorporated for public safety video surveillance equipment with related software, cloud services, and accessories. Purchase order value is $860,810.18 for three years. Funding is through the Sheriff's Public Safety Local Option Levy. No County General Funds are involved for the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office. Finance, item one, approval of a contract with Johnson Controls Incorporated for the development and implementation of a comprehensive sequence of operation for the expansion of the central utility plant. Total contract value $403,061. Funding is through budgeted County General Funds and is eligible for a 50% reimbursement through the Oregon Courthouse Capital Construction and Improvement Fund. Transportation and Development, item one, approval of a personal services contract with Conso or North America for construction, engineering, support, and inspection services for 2024 local paving chip seal insert slurry seal projects. Total contract value $392,069. Funding through House Bill 2017 road funds. No County General Funds are involved. Item two, approval of a public, pardon, public improvement contract with Eagle Elsner Incorporated for the Haynes Road Paving Project. Contract value $1,200,000. Funding through House Bill 2017 road funds. No County General Funds are involved. Item three, approval of a public improvement contract with Eagle Elsner Incorporated for the Overland, Overland Park Paving Project. Contract value $467,201. Funding is through House Bill 2017 road funds. No County General Funds are involved. Health Housing Human Services, item one, approval of a subrecipient grant agreement with Parrot Creek Child and Family Services Incorporated for rural mobile services. Total value $200,000 for two years. Funding through opioid settlement services. No County General Funds are involved. Item two, approval of a board order authorizing a purchase order for emergency survival kits for individuals with intellectual and developmental and or developmental disabilities from Ethos Evacuation Strategies LLC under a cooperative contract. Purchase order value $372,600. Funding through the Oregon Department of Human Services. No County General Funds are involved. Item three, approval of a subrecipient grant agreement with Totos Untos for his prevention specialist in Estacada at the middle school and affordable housing complex. Total value $200,000 for two years. Funding through opioid settlement dollars. No County General Funds are involved. Item four, approval of amendment number one to a grant agreement with the Oregon Criminal Justice Commission for the Mental Health Court Program. Amendment value $449,005. Total value $625,285. For one year and nine months. Funding through the Oregon Criminal Justice Commission. No County General Funds are involved. Item five, approval of amendment number one to a grant agreement with the Oregon Criminal Justice Commission for the Adult Drug Court Program. Amendment value $689,868. Total value $883,316. For one year and nine months. Funding through the Oregon Criminal Justice Commission. No County General Funds are involved. Item six, approval of amendment number one to a revenue grant agreement with Care Oregon for the Strategic Healthcare Investment for Transformation Program. Amendment value $670,000. Total value $820,000 for one year and 10 months. Funding through Care Oregon. No County General Funds are involved. Item seven, approval of a federal grant agreement with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the Hope One Leasing Program. Total agreement value $350,619. For one year. Funding through a federal grant with required 25% match of $87,672.25 from the Oregon Department of Housing and Community Services. No County General Funds are involved. Item eight, approval of a federal grant agreement further from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the Housing Our Heroes Program. Total agreement value $436,377. For one year. Funding through a federal housing urban development grant with a required 25% match of $109,094.25 from budgeted County General Funds. Item nine, approval of federal grant agreement with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the Coordinated Housing Access Program. Total agreement value is $360,513. For one year. Funding through a federal grant agreement with a required 25% match of $90,128.25 through Metro Supportive Housing Services Measure Funds. No County General Funds are involved. Item 10, approval of a amendment that
Doing so well.
Approval of amendment number three, increasing funding from an intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Health Authority for financing of community mental health, addiction treatment, recovery, and prevention, and problem gambling services. Amendment value is $1,000,000 for 13 months. Agreement value is increased to $16,854,233.26 for 18 months. Funding through the Oregon Health Authority. No County General Funds are involved. Madam Chair, that concludes the list.
Thank you. Does any Commissioner wish to remove anything from the consent agenda? I will entertain a motion.
I move for approval of the consent agenda.
Second. Commissioner Shaw has moved for approval of the consent agenda, and Commissioner Schrader has seconded that motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Tony, take the poll, please.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Savas.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye, motion passes five zero. Thank you very much. Up next is public communication. This portion of the agenda shall be limited to items of county business which are properly the object of board consideration and should be nonpartisan in nature, as the BCC is a nonpartisan governing body under Oregon revised statutes and county code. Testimony is limited to three minutes. Comments shall be respectful and courteous to all. As a reminder, you can email submissions for public communication at bcc@clackamas.us, and those will be accepted as part of the public record. I will now open the meeting for public testimony. I will take in-person testimony first. Do we have a card from anyone, Les Poole? Would you like to come forward, please? Thank you very much. Please state your name, your area of residence.
Good morning, Les Poole. I, I live in the county and have been here for three decades. Several subjects today. One of them is, of course, the fires, and we don't have time to get into a deep discussion about that. But it's so reminiscent of, of four years ago, when the Riverside Fire and other fires devastated the area. I would hope that when this fire season's over, from the state and other authorities, we get a tally of how many of them were lightning, natural fires? How many of them were mega fires? How many of them were started by arson? How many are unknown? We need to get a handle on this. And I'll share an experience I had. Sadly, I lost a friend to cancer down in southern Oregon, and I went down to help with their property. His wife was His wife was devastated, and there was so much going on, but I knew that I needed to show up and help them clean up the property, create defensible space, and just be there for them. And I was just almost, I don't want to say obsessed, but I could tell that one spark, and both their houses were going to be gone. Tender dry down there. And of all things, the day that I finished removing all of the brush and grass and debris out front, three hours later, the property across the street, this is all rural property, treed property, is in flames. And I'm going to segue here. This was a really awkward situation. So here I am, trying to protect them, and what really saved their property is the wind was blowing the other way. When I called 911, they got there quickly. They were able to keep it down to a couple acres. But here's the segue part. Here's where I'm going to transition. How did that fire start? Well, that morning, I got my coffee. I decided to run up the road a couple miles. They got a nice little area, sort of like Mount Talbot, got trails, nature area. Here's this woman sitting at a picnic bench. It's 10 o'clock in the morning, and she's screaming and yelling under her phone, very upset, very distressed. And after a while, I kind of walked over, and I said, "You okay?" And she said, "I'm fine." And of course, I knew she wasn't. And lo and behold, who was at the fire? She was. Who was arrested for arson? She was. And I had seen her the day before in town, and it was very clear that this woman was angry and distressed and shouldn't have been out on the streets and was. So we're back to that. What are the real costs? What are the real impacts of the homelessness, the drug abuse, and the other things like that that have been happening? It was very eye-opening, and when I headed for home, of course, I'm coming up I-5, and I'll wrap up here, but coming up I-5, I look off by Cottage Grove, huge plume of smoke, fresh fire. I get up the road to Rice Hill, look off the side of the freeway, another fire. So anything that can be done to address the policies of forest management and a bigger look at how are we going to deal with this is due. And I'll conclude by saying I'm not here to expect the county to do that. I understand that if you drive up above Estacada, you'll see the remnants of the fire. It's horrific up there on 224, and most of that land is in the national forest. If you look at a map, I think most of Clackamas County is probably in the national forest. I think we have more national forest land than we do private land, but I just want to wrap up by saying I'm sharing this because it shows how things are connected. It's not just a drug problem. It's not just a homeless problem. We've got some social problems, and they're overlapping, and I don't know how you're going to deal with them all because there isn't enough time or money. So I appreciate the time, and thanks for the extra couple minutes to share something that when I tell people the story, they're quite intrigued.
Yes.
Yes, and I'm a witness, and when they subpoena me, I will show up.
Wow. Thank you for sharing that story, Les Poole. Yes, there's a lot of little fires in Clackamas County, but I have to say, our first responders have been extremely responsive in putting them out. There's been two fires within a mile of my home this week, looking out my back porch on a, they call it a sandstone fire. It's just west of the top mountain, and they're dipping in Detroit Lake and Timothy Lake to try to put it out last night before it got dark. I heard this helicopter go over my house. I go, "Oh, it's getting closer. It's getting closer." So I looked out the window, and sure enough, it was one of the helicopters that had a bucket tethered to the bottom. I assumed it was going home because it was starting to get dark, going back to be refueled to continue on that. So we're watching that intently. I have a little app on my phone. Now, these apps are great. So get watch duty. I'm serious. I've had so many weather apps, so many fire apps, watch duty. You can put the area that you're interested in. I put Clackamas County, and then you get a notification that this is happening. Les, you sent me a picture yesterday of Ramsey Road Fire up south of Malala. It's about eight miles out of town, but it's in an area that was grass and transitioning into timber that was put out fast because our fire departments are now able to respond for something besides a home burning down, and I'm very thankful for that. Thank you for bringing up. Is there anyone else in the room who would like to testify? Tony, is there anyone online?
Madam Chair, do not have any members of the public on Zoom at the moment.
Okay, that's the end of the public testimony portion of this meeting, and Gary, what's next?
This is County Administrator Update. I'd like to recognize our employees for the good work that they do, and today, I'd like to share a note that the Department of Transportation and Development received from representatives of the Redland, Viola, and Fishers Mill Community Planning Organization, or CPOs. CPOs exist in unincorporated areas of Clackamas County to primarily review land use applications, but also provide general feedback and guidance to the Board of County Commissioners. So this note came from the Redland, Viola, and Fishers Mill CPO. We would like to express our appreciation for the fine work you, and this is referring to Transportation Project Manager Bob Noor, and your team in the Department of Transportation and Development did to create the two turn lanes on Redland Road. We understand that County Inspector Josh Mitchell also played a part in this project. Clackamas County had chartered the vehicular accidents at the intersections of Ferguson Road and Redland Road, and again at Bradley Road and Redland Road. Your department made proposals to address the dangerous situation and create a safer corridor at those two areas. When our CPO became aware of the plans for turn lanes, we asked you to attend our CPO meeting and explain the proposal in detail. At the second meeting, we made suggestions to you to modify the plans, and your team acknowledged our input, and you made the adjustments. You listened to us. Thank you for you and the other staff for completing this project in a timely manner and allowing us to be informed. We look forward to having a voice in any transportation plans that impact our community, and they did. So thank you to Bob Noor and Josh Mitchell from our team for their great work in supporting the CPO and hearing their input. That is my update for today. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you very much. Now we will move on to Commissioner Communication. Commissioner Schrader, you're up first.
Yeah, I just want to mention, I had a great time in my hometown of Lake Oswego for National Night Out. I was pretty lucky. Usually I go all over the county, but this neighborhood of mine had a great celebration with our fire department and our sheriff's office, and we all gathered in between our two streets with a big potluck. I got to show my, Commissioner Shaw, my barking dogs off, even though they bark too much. If they get to know the neighborhood, people can't stay too mad for long, I have to tell you. It was a great night, and the high point was when the fire guys had water balloons, and so they got into a water balloon fight with all the little kids there, which was hysterical. And they also opened up the fire hydrant at that particular area, and it was just fun. It's good. I love this every year in the beginning of August because the weather's usually warm enough to really go out and enjoy it, and you really get to know your neighbors, you get to understand your neighborhood, and really kind of connect with people in a way that you don't do all the time. So I'm hopeful that we'll be doing more of those for the rest of the summer in my neighborhood. I know I have another event coming up with my easement on the lake where we all get together and celebrate one another as we enjoy the water. So I'm very, very lucky to have that. Some of the work I've been doing, I know that our Clackamas County Childcare Coalition has met this morning. Of course, I have to be here so I don't go to those meetings, but they are reviewing a document that will hopefully move us forward with a path for increasing childcare capacity, and that may include, when the next legislative session occurs, it may occur, looking at legislation from the state level that will help us as a county kind of move ahead with an initiative of that kind. Lastly, I'd like to talk a little bit about libraries. You know, it was interesting conversation yesterday, and I just want to remind people, as I said yesterday, that libraries are really without borders, okay? So we need to really look at where they're located, how they're located, and not get so caught up in the particularities of whether libraries, you know, the libraries are using money for facilities as well as operational things. I think there's room in both for that because if you don't have a facility, libraries are one of the things that we still need a building for because it provides access to the community of people that may not have, it's not just books anymore. It really has to do with all the technology that we have that libraries provide. So I think that's going to be a pretty important conversation as we go forward, assuming Commissioner Savas will be doing that with Eldak. I'd like to be involved with that, if I may, because I think we need to all come to the same page about how we're going to work with libraries in a system and not worry about borders so much. Everybody should be able to go to any library in this entire district and get the books they need, plus get library access through books being sent to them, as well as being able to use the computer system that we manage as a county for every library in the county. So I'm looking forward to working on those issues. Brings me back to my library roots, and other than that, that's about all I have for today.
Thank you, Commissioner Schrader. Up next, Commissioner West.
Thank you. Not much to say. This week, we've been on this dais a lot and done a lot of work this week, so I know that we have a busy rest of August, and it looks like even September's filling up pretty quick. I want to thank H3S, Mary Rambo, Adam Brown, Captain Malcolm McDonald, yeah, and the Chief of Police from Milwaukee. His name escapes me, but I want to thank those individuals for doing a fantastic presentation to the Milwaukee City Council on our 23-Hour Stabilization Center and really doing a fantastic job answering tough questions from that board, and I think helping build collaboration with Milwaukee's City Council. Special thanks to Councilor Will Anderson and Rebecca Staven-Jord on their efforts to really promote the infrastructure we need around recovery. After that, myself and Cindy Beckett were able to present on the recovery campus, and they were, it looks like, fully supportive, and we actually suspect that they will put forth a resolution, not a resolution, or a public declaration of their support in Clackamas County's recovery efforts. I think they were very inspired by the work that we are doing and that we plan on doing around a recovery campus. They seem to have, we seem to have gotten the same type of thumbs up and support in certain aspects from Happy Valley. We haven't always had that from our local partners. We also explained to them how we were very unique in our process to help fund local initiatives to take care of their neighbors that struggle with substance abuse disorder and homelessness. Norwood County did that, our partner with their local cities, the way Clackamas County did. That was very, that fit within our recovery-oriented system of care. We were also able to kind of teach them and inform them the model that we're using, which is the recovery-oriented system of care. Very reproductive meeting. Gary, thank you for putting that together, and it was an honor to be able to help testify on behalf of this board on the efforts that we were doing. So I think that was really important work and really good bridge building. Hope we can continue to operate that way. And I know that we have done a lot of work in a lot of important spaces this week, so I will be brief because we have been on this dais a lot today and this week. So that's all I have to report.
Thank you. Commissioner Shaw?
Yes, good morning, Clackamas County. Just a few quick bullets for you. Again, another reminder about fire prevention. If you haven't been to the Clackamas County Disaster Management website to learn what you can do to make your property a little bit more fire resistant, do that. You'll also learn about evacuation routes and communication in our public alert system. I'd like to thank the National Guard for air assets and ground personnel that are assisting in the state fighting fires. Also, I'd like to thank our U.S. Forest Service personnel here in Mountain National Forest and our county disaster management personnel for keeping an eye on these fires. You can help be safe. Also, I'd like to thank our county clerk, Catherine McMullin, and her staff for the work they're doing. One of those things is constant work to ensure our voter rolls are updated, and please, if you know anybody that's moved, you've moved, or there's a change to your voter registration, please see the clerk's website, click voter registration, and make sure that your registration is up to date so that when your ballot goes out in October, it goes to the right place. And also, one more thing on a happy side is tomorrow, 4:00, in Boring, Boring Dole Day Celebration, 4:45, the world's shortest parade, and hope to see you out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Shaw. Up next, Commissioner Savas.
Yeah, I struggle whether or not I really want to comment at all today. It's been a very rough week. I reflected quite often on this, which we all have on our table. The Clackamas County Board of Commissioners Working Agreement that was adopted in March of '21, March 8th specifically, 2021, which four of us on this commission were part of. And the one I kept on bouncing back with, which pains me, was number 14. Even though struggled with this week with number three, number eight A, number eight C, number 10, had to go back to trying to reconcile number 14, which says, "Hold each other accountable for these commitments." Very difficult to do because really, you get into situations where, how do you do that in a respectful way if you're already on a theme of very little respect? And on the very last one, the very last piece of this, it says, "Correct misinformation," which is very difficult to do. It's also very difficult to do when you're not recognized in an orderly fashion and supplied inconsistently. So I feel on behalf of the commission that it was a very tough week, that it was not really a week that I'm really proud of. We did do some good work that I'm proud of. It's nice to have board rules after three-plus years, to have board rules adopted. It was part of this discussion that we had in March 8th of 2021. That's how long we've been trying to do that. So I just want to just draw attention to the fact that we owe the public much better than that.
Have you finished?
And I guess one of the things that's come up is being interrupted.
Will you pause, Commissioner Savas? I thought you were done, so before I started my Commissioner Communication, I asked you if you were finished, but if you need to continue, please go ahead.
No, thanks, Chair. You're anxious to speak.
No, I'm not. We have a half hour. Go ahead.
I think I have a pattern of saying when I'm finished that I yield back to the chair, and I did not do that today because I wasn't finished, but Chair, I'm used to this this week.
Commissioner Savas, I feel sorry for you. So let's just stop this, okay? Yes, National Night Out was very fun this week. I attended Happy Valley. It was very large. We had a band. We had a lot of public safety people. We had firefighters. We had the sheriffs, and a lot of people I knew. It was really great. What I also noticed about the National Night Out, there was a lot of other opportunities to attend, even in the town of Beaver Creek, which is very small. I will look forward to being at Boring Dole Days. Hope Commissioner Shaw doesn't eat all the ice cream before I get there. I am not going to do the parade this year because it's the world's smallest parade. You know, it's fun, but I think I'm going to skip it this year. I'll just meet the family. Thank you very much. Seeing no further business before this commission, we are adjourned.